All right, I think we're live.
Right?
Make sure, I want to make sure the feed is on. There we go. Let's get it. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to, I am your host, Tyrone Bridges. Let's get it. Welcome, welcome, everybody. This is June 29th, 2022. But give the intro. Being a little late, we had a little technical difficulties, but it don't stop anything. Welcome to the show, everybody. I am your host, Tyrone Bridges. And we have a very, very special guest on our show, a first time guest on our show. Ms. Angeline Smith for Ann Arbor City Council, Ward One. Welcome to the show.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm happy to be here.
Alrighty. Tell everybody a little bit about you. I've already gave the intro. Um, and let people know about your campaign, pretty please.
Well, great. Thank you. Uh, first I'll give just a brief, um, history, a background. I am, uh, running for Ann Arbor City Council, of course, and I am a small business owner in Ann Arbor. I own a small boutique accounting firm where I provide, uh, financial management and strategic planning, services to nonprofits and, uh, small business owners. And I relocated here in 2007. Um, I'm a native of Detroit, grew up, born and raised there. And, uh, I had, um, I have an accounting degree, uh, from Wayne State University. I have a master's in public administration from Central Michigan University. And after graduating, I got a chance to travel across the country and, uh, use my skills and learn more about, uh, managing grants. Um, and so I decided after a few years that I really wanted to see the impact of my work at the ground level for the community. And so I decided to start the business, um, to serve nonprofits. And so that's what I've been doing for the last 18 years, uh, and since 2007, I've been doing it here, uh, in Ann Arbor. I decided to run, uh, for city council because like many people, there's a, there's a, a challenge with regard to housing affordability. And, uh, after about three years of having, uh, relocated here, uh, I got pushed out and I ended up moving out of the city for about two years until I found Arrowood Hills Cooperative. Uh, Arrowood is on the northeast side here in Ward One and it's a member owned cooperative. Uh, we own shares in the corporation and we can keep the equity inside. So we keep the, uh, cost down. So that's what makes it affordable housing. And for me, I think that's extremely important because as I, from what I know, that's the only opportunity for people to have ownership, uh, in the city. And what I'm hearing right now is about, um, affordable housing. And everything that I've heard so far is about government subsidized, which is awesome. We need it, but we also need to look at housing affordability, particularly because I live in an area that has been completely gentrified. And from what I understand about this side of town, it was the bustling black community. And right now that's not the case and they're continuing to develop. And so I have a strong interest, having had been pushed out and having come back. But I want other people to have the opportunity. So that's one of the flagship, uh, uh, areas of my platform. And so that's why I'm running.
All right, let's talk about the gentrification, uh, issue here in, uh, and there in Ann Arbor. Uh, let's, let's talk with the public a little bit more about that because, uh, a lot of times you don't get these interviews with, uh, uh, questions and, uh, continuous questions of this substance.
Right. Well, to be honest with you, I, I had no idea. And coming from a city that was 90% black and then I'm coming here and we're what, at 6%, and I'm running a small business and, um, I'm not finding a black community. And so, um, I've, I've been doing research after I put my hat in the ring and what I'm finding, because I've, I've learned and I had no idea at the time, um, what I know now that this area was actually a stop along the Underground Railroad. Uh, and so there are places, there are houses right in the community that actually have the, the areas where, where people had to escape. And, um, uh, moving that forward, uh, you, you know, Carytown, uh, in Ann Arbor. That's where the black district was. There was a bustling black dis- business district of Fourth Avenue. All of that is gone. I have met who have been born and raised here, who no longer live here, but they can identify their homes. They know the history of it. And, um, so it's ironic, um, that this is the one place here at Arrowood where, um, the majority of the people who own shares here are African American. There's certainly other, uh, people of color here and, uh, whites as well. But the idea is, and, and to much to my surprise, this was an area. I had no idea, um, that, that all of this had taken place. And it's a trend across the country over the years with redlining and with all of the things that have taken place. I haven't put that as the forefront of my campaign, but it certainly is important to me. And quite frankly, what's frustrating to me and why I'm glad I have the opportunity is because as I've been running, um, there have been people who have said, because I'm not just beating the drum about this, because there are other issues that the voters, which is a larger population are concerned about, um, that I'm not for black people. And that has been extremely frustrating. Then on the other side, I get emails from people saying, I could just flip a coin. Uh, what's the difference between you and your opponent? What sets you apart? And I have been trying to get FaceTime. I have been invited to places where they've invited both myself and my opponent. And I'm running a very positive campaign. She's also an African American woman and that's, I don't play that game. We're not going to be here as entertainment for people, but I do want to fight a good fight. And when I'm getting things like this in the mail with my opponents, endorsements, we're talking about the mayor, the Wayne County share, we're talking about a state senator. Uh, I'm up against a huge, um, fight here. And I'm completely independent and, and what, what's happening is as I'm getting interviewed by the media, the first interview I had, it was all about, isn't Ann Arbor, don't, what, what do you see about the racism in Ann Arbor? Isn't Ann Arbor a race? Don't you think if you have two black women that's running, that there's something else you can ask us other than about race?
Exactly.
Are multifaceted. We have other issues, just like everybody else. I want to see, uh, carbon neutrality by 2030. I want, uh, a transit corridor so people don't have to drive into the city. Uh, I want all of those things as well. Don't just ask me about race. It's, it's in my face every day. So that was the first experience. The other thing that is frustrating to me as I try to get myself in front of people and I haven't been able to do that in a way that people can answer that question, which black one are you? Uh, I don't get the opportunity to do that. And, uh, so I answer all of my emails. Uh, I'm told that people don't get responses when they, uh, contact, uh, my opponent. And if they do, it's not a direct, uh, contact from my opponent. And again, I'm just stating what I'm hearing and it's extremely frustrating to me is I think the voters need to be aware that there's a deeper thing going on here. And, and what that means is don't just look at these postcards. This is mine. That's me and my dog Larry. That's one voter who earned, who I earned the right to have her ask for my yard sign and take a photo. I have no other endorsements. Uh, and so for me, it, it comes down to me trying to, in this last month, get some FaceTime in front of people. I'm doing a series of eight town hall meetings. Over the next two weeks, I've already published them on my Facebook page, on my website. People that want to get to know me and know the difference and know what I stand for, including racial equity. Uh, they have an opportunity so that they don't just make a superficial uninformed decision about who I am and what I bring to the table.
All right. Now check this out. Let me set the record straight here. Everybody knows that I'm a black CEO host of I Thought You Knew. My mission was to invite every candidate to come on the show. And I'd like to call to test their temperature, to see where they're coming from. Or see if they're with the same status quo that's literally pushing us black folks out of existing. I've sent the same invitation to all candidates in all wards equally. Ward one candidates, you and your opponent got the invitation. And yes, both candidates are African American. So to set the record completely clear, I only received one African American candidate that is here today. And you see, she's not afraid to do an interview. That is to me a disrespect to the show when you at least don't reply. And we even having a conversation talking about African American issues. So let me put that plug in viewers and listeners' ears right now. Because a lot of us African American voters have had our votes held hostage for many, many years. You keep voting for the same cliques, the same crews, and we gets nothing. Now, put that right there on your platform and let them know that you're the only Ward One Ann Arbor candidate for city council that replied to a African American CEO host of a show. And also, here's another thing. You have a white male mayor that supposed to care about the African American population. He got an invitation to the show as well. I guess he feels that shows that fits his platform or fits his vision and friendly to him or certain questions won't come out. That's troubling because you guys know our show covers everything. Everything. And we do like to test everybody's temperature. And here we have one candidate. The only African American candidate that came on this show from Ann Arbor. Go figure, everybody. And I don't want to take no more from your platform. So go ahead. I had to put that in there because I have to make sure our African Americans look at this picture right now. And y'all know I'm transparent because if she would have replied to me, Ms. Smith would have seen it as well. That's why I put everybody on the link together. Total transparent. So tell them a little bit more about your campaign and also how they could help you. Get the word out because it's, the tide is changing in Ypsilanti.
Yeah.
The tide, the tide been should have changed in Ann Arbor.
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, the other thing that I mentioned, and I'm going to speak more to some of the issues and, and what I have, um, the positions that I've taken on some of the issues. But the other thing that I want to mention in terms of the narrative that people are trying to project. And I want to write my own story. Whether you like it or not, you get to choose. But I don't want anybody else to tell my story. And so, uh, this whole thing about factions, this us and them on the city council. And the people that come onto my Facebook page and just say, your supporters this, your supporters that. I've run a very, you will not find any place that I've said anything negative about anybody. Because I can put myself out there without hurting other people. And if people are informed enough to want to hear that instead of get down into the dirt and the fray and the negativity, they can make informed decisions. So I'm asked the question, you must be on, though, on their side. And then they start this diatribe of what the other side wants. So they're constantly trying to pit me against either, each, it, other, this other faction. I don't even have the money to put a target on my back for them to come after me. So why would I even want to align myself with somebody else that nobody knows me? So even in the Observer article for July, if you see myself and my opponent side by side in this article. And I had an interview with that, uh, reporter. And the question was, there's people that think this, there's other people that think this, what do you stand? Every other, every question was, it depends. There are nuances. We go dig deep. It's not just black and white. So I'll give you an example. I'm asked a question about, do you support the TC1 Transit Corridor? Where they're trying to build all of this development along the Transit Corridor over on State Street right now. Are you for or against it? Well, yeah, in theory, I'm for building that, but let's go a little deeper than that. Let's see whether or not it's actually getting done in terms of sustainability and affordable house. Because when you peel back the onion and you look at the fact that we are reselling property to make it appealing for developers. And then when developers come to the table and they want to develop in this transit corridor and you're on the other hand saying you're for affordability, you're for sustainability, but you, you leave it all on the table and let the developers decide what they're going to build?
That's sad.
Pay attention. So yeah, everybody's standing there for the same thing, but how does it get done? And that's what I'm talking about. I'm there for. I'm an accountant. I am somebody that focuses on metrics. When I work with nonprofits, I talk about their key performance indicators. How do you know what success looks like? So in this particular example, if you're negotiating with developers, because they're coming to get that permit to come into the city and make the money, what are we saying we want in exchange? Other than just them to go in and build. And when I put that question to people that are on the council, they come back and I've heard the mayor say this, it's all about supply and demand. Well, guess what? That's trickle down. That's Reaganomics. Okay? Democratic economics is you influence the market. You make sure you get what you need. And so there's no influence. If you're literally telling me, we're just going to let the market decide. Yeah, I understand that. I study. I know my details. I'm not just coming in here blind going, I just want to sit on council. I run a business for the last 18 years. This is a part-time job for me and I'm taking a huge risk. My business is completely word of mouth. If my clients don't believe or agree with me, I risk losing that income. But this is how much I believe in this. There needs to be transparency in government. So when I talk about the KPIs, the key performance indicators, indicators, I'm talking about making sure the voters don't just get to the polls and say, yes, I want to raise my taxes for affordable housing through this village. And then all of a sudden you see all this development and it's $2,000 for a box apartment to rent. That's not how it's supposed to work. And to the extent that people understand the nuances of it, that's what I intend to do at the council table. Is to make sure we're not pitting each other against each other. I know how to count to six. I know how many votes I need on city council if I'm putting an initiative forward. So if that means I need to support what somebody else does, fine. But then when it's time for me to come to the table, I've made enough, uh, goodwill to negotiate with people. I'm trying to set the tone that we're all supposed to be for the same thing. And to the extent that we get it done, then you can see that we all are. But the fact that we're just talking about it, that's not good enough. Not good enough. And I'm living what I'm talking about. I'm living in affordable house.
And see, that, that's a genuine, uh, thing to bring to the table as, as a council person, a person that understands the, the lowest of the lowest of their constituents. And a lot of times, we experience the same thing over here. Uh, rental properties, uh, squeezing us out of everywhere. Our black representatives that's been on, uh, uh, councils and, and, and commissions and, and state representatives and senators for, for, for years. And we gets nothing. It's obvious there needs to be a change. In council, it's just sad. I'm, I'm, I'm surprised that it's only one set of black people running for Ann Arbor City Council and all those wards that you got. That's, that's a shame. And it's not that black folks are being squoos out of the party. You just need to throw your name in the hat. Interview. Be transparent. Have a humble spirit. Everybody might not like what you say, but it's how you deliver it. And this, and some people don't like me using the word snub when they come on the show. But it's evident that if you, if, if you're requesting, if somebody requesting to interview you and you don't reply, it's either one, you don't have the time and courtesy, the courtesy thing to do is what? Reply and say, I don't have the time. Let's do it another time. Two, ignore the interview. And I can list the ones that ignored, ignored the interview that are African American in Ypsil. In Washtenaw County. And it'd be the, our own black folks say that we are biased. Well, all you got to do was come on the show, open your mouth and set the record straight. Don't leave nobody to their own opinion. And this is what my job is to do. As a voter, I have a right to have my own opinion. As a, as a show host, I supposed to be fair. And if you don't come on and talk about your platform and you must think that the voters don't listen to the show. They must be mistaken. So we need more accountability. I go around in Ann Arbor in that area and your area all the time. And it amazed me. It amazed me at the development that's over there. And out of the times that I've drove in that area, I know where you at. At the times that I drove in your area, honestly, out of the months that I've drove in that area, I only seen two or three African Americans walking Duvarre Road and all those other trails and back down Pontiac Trail. But when you come out of Arrowood, it is a dense population of African Americans, but you do see a lot of foreigners. Non-African Americans. I'm going to say it how you, how you, how you want to hear it. Non-African Americans driving those cars, those Teslas. I don't get it. And it was supposed to be a, a, a project to improve the Arrowood community to, uh, 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 upgrade. Now, do you know about that? That you can share something on the story about that? Because I, I, I really need to hear more if you know about it. If you don't.
I don't know all the details, but I know that there's some proposal about some Arrowood two or something like that. But you know, here's the deal. I have studied the idea of what it means to have cooperative housing. We need land. We need a corporation formed and we need financing. It's not that difficult. Okay? If the city has the land, if the people come together, and it's not just about black people. And this is where I get pushback because people think when I say that, I don't support black people. But when you look at it from a socioeconomic level, it's going to impact us anyway. So let's say I'm just looking at that. You think that's going to exclude you? If I'm just fighting for people who have had their wages not go and be stagnant to, uh, in, against the increasing cost of living? That doesn't mean I don't support black people. I'm saying that there are other people who are dealing with this as well. Why separate ourselves and say, we suffer more than them? We're still going to get the benefit of what I'm advocating for. I don't have to give somebody some, um, speech about why you need to support me because I'm black. I need to make sure I'm a good representative of those who vote for me.
That's right.
And that doesn't mean to the exclusion of black people because I try to appeal to all voters. I would be stupid if I'm trying to run for an office and I'm not appealing to the broad perspective, spectrum of people that's voting.
That's right.
I'm approaching things from a strategic level, but I'm not moving anybody.
That's it. And for the people to interview you guys, that, that is what they need to talk about. They need to talk about the inclusion of everybody.
Exactly.
When we talk on the show, we tend to talk about low income, the poorest of the community. And when I say that, I mean, it don't, it's not rocket science. When you say the poorest of the community, who majorly, the poorest of the community is your African American population. So for them to say it like you don't understand it and you live in that population is a little biased. It, it is a little biased.
Yeah. And I'll give you an example of the other way and where I think I can make an impact when it comes to lived experiences. Okay? I'm engaging with people. Now, the people who support me, it came organically. I do have people that would be quote unquote, in those factions that support me. And the way they support me is volunteering or whatnot. I'm not getting banked. Okay? People are believing in my message. And so it, it's, it's just ingenuine to say, ingenuous to say that because you are, have supporters that are against the other faction, that you're in that group.
Right.
That's a false narrative. I'm not going to let anybody tell that story. So here's the example. I'm talking with somebody that's supporting me. Very well-established white man and we're kicking it about the environment and sustainability. And so we're just engaging. And so he says, there have been some proposals that one of the things we can do is impose this requirement on homeowners who are selling their home to go through this sustainability, uh, test on their home. And it triggered me. If you remember the, the emissions testing in the state of Michigan, how people were required to get their vehicles tested before they could get their registration.
Right.
To me because I watched my mom struggle to get her vehicle tested. Okay? It was not an intention to impact a lower socioeconomic status of people. But that's exactly what that did. That's an unintended consequences. And if I'm sitting at the table knowing that experience where people are well-meaning going, we're trying to get the environment the way it needs to be. And so this is what we have to do. When you impose those things on certain people, they can't afford it. So who better to say, hey, we need to think a little bit better about requiring this because my mom needed to get outside of the city of Detroit where the jobs were. And if she couldn't get her vehicle to pass the emissions test, she couldn't get to her job. Now, I don't assume that those people who impose that were saying, we're going to stick it to the people. They just may not have had those lived experience to see what impacts people. I'm beginning to benefit of the doubt. Right? And that's what I'm talking about. And so it enlightened him. He was like, oh, I didn't even think about it like that. No, because you haven't had that experience and that's okay. That's why we need to engage. So you have somebody with a certain perspective on the council that when those conversations come up, it's like, wait, we're not trying to hurt somebody to help somebody. Let's look at this again from this perspective. And that's what I can bring to the table.
That, look here. Everybody in Ann Arbor and Ward One, um, Ann Arbor voters, y'all, y'all look, y'all got to do some study because you want to engage in anybody. I'm talking about African Americans because I'm black and majority of the time, stuff ain't cool. And we get last, last, last things for us before any groups or any fractions. So you have to think about your vote. And everybody go, goes and do the And everybody go goes and do the absentee ballots, we know this trickery all in Ipsy in Washtenaw County, we know it, we've been knowing, everybody hurry up. Vote on your absentee ballot before the dog on uh. The 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 stuff comes out that needs to come out. These cliques, Ann Arbor voters. And I'm talking about black, white. Different color foreigners, however you wanna say it, you know, I mean, no disrespect, we are human. Please study your vote. You casting your vote is just like throwing your whole paycheck away for a year, for two years. Study your vote before you give anybody your vote, test their temperatures. Find out of there for me, 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 or there for everybody. Just because a black person is running, they're not always having to focus on black issues, get that through y'all skull. For anybody who interviewed these lovely women ever again. Because I haven't had an opportunity to meet your candidate, your 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 opponent. The other candidate, I haven't had the opportunity to meet her. And that's sad. Black folk, we've been behind the eight ball a long time. Ann Arbor ain't been good to us. But y'all need to test that temperature, y'all other candidate. Stop asking her scripted questions, I don't know you at all, do I?
Have no idea, and we didn't speak before this.
Never met you before.
Nope.
Heard so much about her. But look here, this transparency. This transparency, it's the best you can get. And I know this is gonna be played over and over and over, people like to go on my Facebook and share it and look at it, y'all gonna see it, Ann Arbor voters. Test the temperature of these elected officials. From the state, all the way down to the county, all the way down to the local municipalities. Ipsy and Ann Arbor gotta make some serious choices. Ann Arbor Ward one. Needs to have a serious consideration. Damn what you read in paper, you would want a candidate to talk. You don't want a candidate to. Run around with flyers and, I mean, you shouldn't win because you got leaflets. You shouldn't win because you got leaflets. All of that right there, that's bought and paid for. That's bought and paid for. I don't care who hears this show, but y'all, this is your vote, I'm not gonna throw my vote away. If I was an Ann Arbor Ward one voter, I would listen to this interview. I would look at the leaflets that they drop cuz flyers don't vote. Campaign signs don't vote. A lot of people that don't have campaign signs in their yards gonna vote their conscience. Because look here, in Ipsy, this is what happened in the little old Ipsy, you got the same old people in office. And talking about what they gonna do for the last ten years or more. And I can count the bodies that didn't happen, one was yesterday. Day before yesterday, there was some incidents, I can go all the way back for the whole year. Ipsy Lanny and Ipsy Lanny Township, y'all elected officials or representatives from the current old up to the top. Their temperatures really need to be tested. Because bodies are are gonna fall unless some real change is gonna happen. Ann Arbor, same thing. Ann Arbor. When things get bad in one area and these youth get to acting up. You have to do more care. You you can't build. What the hell Ann Arbor building so much for, these a lot of these young folks ain't getting no jobs. A lot of them ain't getting no jobs, you have to have certifications on certifications. And it's sad, I went to Ann Arbor Kroger store, and I was like, on Plymouth Road, I was like, wow. I thought it was an Asian market, no disrespect, but dang, everything Asian. I I I'm surprised, are they weaning everybody out? What's going on, what's really going on, Washtenaw County, Ann Arbor, Michigan? It's sad, we gotta change the page, we gotta push that reset button. And look, I don't have no other candidate to waive my decision on endorsements or favored or this or that and the other. But y'all know the July surprise is coming up. July ain't nothing but a couple more days away, and we said we gonna share all. All of the candidates that we support endorse. And asking for you to vote for on August second, and let's see if we can. Push that reset button and flip the page. Because you need some real representatives, Ann Arbor. You need some real representatives that ain't afraid to talk. Ain't afraid to talk. And I'm saying, I'm the only, unless unless you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm the only black per. CEO, host of a show. That even requested candidates to come on.
It's true.
So Ann Arbor, go figure. Ward one Ann Arbor, go figure. And if they was just too busy, all it takes, I leave my phone number, I leave our hotline number, pick up the phone. Give me a date, neither one of them did, neither. I'm the only black host requesting candidates. And not scripted to talk to me, so they can talk to the voters. Once again, y'all, look at that picture, something really wrong with that picture, don't y'all be hoodwinked or bamboozled. And vote for these candidates that's gonna bring the same old thing. Don't do that, y'all. We have some fine candidates out there. Know who you're voting for, just like when you're eating, you gotta know what you're putting in your stomach. Because this is a consequence right here, right? This is a consequence, when you vote, voting has consequences.
Yes, it does, yes.
So sister, look here. Let me give you a word of advice from experience. I have a track record. I'm not even gonna talk about my track record, I'm just gonna give you the experience part.
Okay.
You see, even when I ran for city council. I ran for city council as a grassroots. Man, my mama threw me in the race, she said, boy, you need to run, if you can't beat them, you need to join them. Get in there and change some stuff. All the stuff that I was doing. With the brothers that was out there doing drive bys, black on black violence. I had to fund everything myself. And I had elected officials that was on council that was running for office. When Ann Arbor News, what is it, I think it was the Ipsy Press back then. And here's two black candidates that's running for city council, Ward one. So. The reason why I'm telling you this story is very important, and whoever have a problem with it, you know what you can do. A incumbent was running against Tyrone Bridges at the time, I won't mention her name, but she's a hurt. The caption of the Ipsy Lanny Press stated. Former missionary versus former convict. I have documentation, anything I speak of, I got receipts. It scorched my soul. Not that the comment was written because I know that I'm not a former convict. Even though I did go to prison, but I'm not a convict. I know the press was against me at the time. I know the person that was in office that ran against me never spoke out against that article. And that same individual is still running for public office. In the same area. I didn't get mad at that person, but I was offended that by you being a black person. Running against another black person. And the and the press hit below the belt. Now, mind you, let me fast forward. Few years when I ran for city council, some years after I did my work in the community. There was another reporter wrote a story about three candidates that were running for city council. And the article said that they supported me because I was the best bet for that position. They called me a problem solver. In which most of my African American politicians that were leaders that are currently in office now. Never supported me. So look, there's a bad story and there's a good story, and here I am now. Every damn politician that's running in Washtenaw County, running for state of Michigan, either interviewing me, interviewing with me. Or someone in their camp is scrambling to tell them to get in contact with this man.
That's right.
And that's a subliminal message to those who are running for public office. All of them have constantly said that black man is a nobody. But I have put so much into this community, just like I know you have put so much into this community. Don't defend your reputation, don't defend your campaign, you run your race, sister. You run your race, sister, and the quietest ones amongst you are gonna be loud on election day. Cuz a lot of people don't believe in them slates, a lot of people don't believe in that big money stuff because what you're doing. At the end of the day. Look at what's happening in our world now, look at what the justices just did. It's not gonna hurt only white people, it's gonna hurt all poor people. And mainly people of color. Which is blacks, cuz we always on the bottom, we are at the bottom. And and you know I'm telling the truth.
Absolutely.
The movements, we are black, and here's the level, there's blacks at the bottom. There's LGBTQ plus community, they get the most support. And don't get it twisted for anybody who takes this message wrong, I support them too. I have kids that are gay. And then the Asian population, they get more support than all of us, so you see that. And if anybody have a problem with what I say. Y'all call the show and interview me, correct me. Because none of the politicians that came on this show or ever will come on this show will ever tell me. That that level is not correct. At the end of the day, black people will get less. Because of the other groups are benefiting over us. Go figure.
I'm an accountant, the numbers bear it out, that's what I do, I look at the stats, I look at metrics and. We can say whatever based on our intrinsic feelings, but I, you know, you you do the numbers. And it it doesn't mean that we're trying to pit each other against each other. The idea is that we understand that there that this is a. White patriarchal society, if you are a woman. Or if you are somebody that's non white, and this is not a negative against anybody, I have, most of my supporters are white men. But I guarantee you, I earned it because I put out a series of listening sessions on Zoom when I first announced. And people were listening, and if what I'm saying is aligning with what people say, they wanna support. And those, some of those that supported me say, hey, I got baggage, and I'm like, what are you guys talking about? Well, what I understood was they have been in a race, they have been maligned, and they have been put on these factions. And to this day, when I engage with people and they wanna tell me why they're against the mayor and this and that, I say, I'm looking at policy. In my opinion, governing is about objectives, not personalities. I don't know the mayor, I cannot not like the mayor, and this whole idea about people hate the mayor, so your opponent might not win because of that. I don't care, I want people to get to know me and my opponent. The the I have nothing against her, in in other words, she'll be my councilperson if she wins, why would I wanna tear her down? Um, in in fact, just on the politics page, when I announced my uh eight town hall sessions. A black woman who I understand is very prominent, she's prominent, she's the go to when somebody wants to get a platform going. In terms of the black community, says, in my opinion, none of them are supporting racial equity. And I said to her, sis, I said, have you spoken with me or my opponent? If not, don't come on social media with that uninformed nonsense, I just posted a link that you're responding to saying, come talk to me. Why come on social media and create the negative negativity, you are the person that's hurting. The advancement of racial equity by dividing us, so I'm gonna speak for her too, because you said neither one of us, so I'm assuming. You didn't speak with her, I don't know, but you also didn't speak to me, so knock it off with the nonsense and trying to get a platform. On my uh race, either run yourself or come talk to me and understand what I'm about, I can't do it in sound bites. I'm not from Detroit where there's a medium, major media market, I'm trying to get in front of people, I've been completely transparent, I can't tell you how many town halls and. Zooms and chat sessions and whatnot I've had, I hadn't, I didn't see her. So this is the point I'm making, don't give me any kind of narrative about me, now, as I said to this woman, once you talk to me. I got nothing to lose, if you don't like what I'm talking about, you get your vote and it's all good, it is what it is, I have nothing to lose here. This is a part time position. I'm I go back to doing what I'm doing, and I can't get up there and save the world.
Right.
Yeah, especially if I'm in what they're calling the minority because they're talking about these fashions, what am I gonna get done? And I'm not just bitching and complaining all the time against somebody, and I'm trying to push my narrative, I'm not for something. But guess what, how can you tell me I'm not for something when I'm over here talking about what I'm for and not fighting against something? That's the problem, everybody wants somebody that's passionate and screaming and yelling and all of this, there's a place for that. I'm not the big advocate activist, you know what I do, I go down to the Family Learning Institute and I. I teach little black boys, I don't have any children. But when I walk in there and these people see me, guess who they throw at me? Cuz they know we're not in there doing that part, so I'm doing what I do, the way I do, don't question where was I. On anything if I'm not trying to lead a march, good on you, you're doing that on my behalf, I'm doing this on your behalf.
Right.
Not do this negativity.
Someone always wanna ask the question, where were you, but the thing of it is, those be the ones that support the same old crap. Once again, I'm gonna mention, real quick, one of our viewers mentioned that, yeah, uh, yeah, you right, brother. Uh, dogs get more rights than black people, black people, animals, animals. LGBTQ plus. The Asian community, they get the rights higher than we do, all of them, and everybody, they got a problem with it, look at what's going on in the world. Look at what's, the gas prices hitting us all.
But can I interject something, cuz I totally agree with you, but in part, because we can't get along.
Hmm, say that, say that again.
Hurt each other. So when you talk about these other communities, look how lockstep they are, they don't have to agree with everything each other says.
Harmony, they work, they still work together.
Right, so, yes, I agree with you, but in part, we have some responsibility too.
I agree.
And that's where I'm frustrated, as you can see, this is not, you know, this is Detroit coming out right now.
It's okay, but I understand that it 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 needs a little Detroit, it needs a little Detroit. It needs a little Detroit. It needs another, uh, uh, uh avenue. It, 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 it needs a little different blood in there. Cause like I said, if you are out here supporting the same candidates. And getting no other results. What government do you wish to? Make your community better. Black politicians that are running for the same position should never be at view with one another. They should be having coffee hours together. They should have conversation and it's almost like a boxing match. May the best person win. May the best person win. It ain't about who you're clicking with. Cause see, the voters that are of your color or the minority that fall below that level. Of, of, of big money. They are, they are actually watching. Trust me, they watching. They're watching. Don't let. Any spirits come out of you or even have to feel that you have to defend yourself because as a public servant. You gonna have to take the good. The bad and sometime the ugly. And we seen the ugly over the last few years. But we don't need that. We need representatives that's gonna be able to talk to the people. It's not about debate about who's blacker. It's about the cliques that you run with. It's like my mama told me when I was raised as a little boy in the townhouses years ago. Son, it's the people who you run with nine times out of ten is gonna make your image. And if, if you running with the people, the haves and the have-nots down here and you running with the have-nots. People gonna look at them and they gonna be like, you really not concerned about the have-nots. Any politician that is running for public office. If you ain't concerned about the have-nots. And I know Ann Arbor in that area that you are in. The Ann Arbor government, I'll tell Mr. Mayor to his face if he ever respond to me and never responded. And I don't mind bashing him a little bit because I think you stank as a damn public official if you don't do every interview. That's like, I could cry the black card. Oh, I'm a black man. He didn't come on my show. I'm black. No, I'm not gonna do that. Cause I feel he's it. To me, I feel he's not. He's not respecting. I have my own opinions and feelings about him, but viewers are watching this. Shows we have in this, uh, one-sixth commission and what's going on in our world and how people are trying to control our government. And who are, and they're controlling our votes. We don't have to put things to a vote because we got them crumbs in office that would do the backdoor deals. That would allow big government to come in and building buildings around you and you trying to scratch your head. Like dang, you wake up the next morning, you see all these contractors building houses that you know your dollars ain't gonna be able to afford. Ain't no social security, ain't no retirement, ain't none of that. From African Americans is gonna be able to afford none of that area over there today building over there in Ward one. They ain't gonna be able to afford it. They ain't.
I know I can't. And, and I, I, I busted my ass, let me just say. To come from relying on public assistance to get it to degrees.
That's alright though.
And decide, this isn't the way for me. I don't wanna do the corporate climb because I'm not seeing the impact on my community. So I'm gonna take. My money, marbles and chalk and my skills and I'm going where I can make an impact. And in the process, guess who gives me the most scrutiny about managing their money? You wanna take a guess?
Who was that?
My people. Okay, so this is what I'm dealing with, okay? I'm on an island. It's not like I'm getting in. Okay, I, I got, I have friends, I have clients that support me, okay? But obviously if they're giving me the ability to manage their money. Then I'm not getting that kinda scrutiny. Okay, so the point that I'm making is. And, and I didn't mean to go to have this narrative, but it's important.
We have to have this dialogue. Right, we need to.
Why does it have to be, if we're supposed to be this big liberal democratic city? And now I'm taking this beyond just black people. Why are we fighting? Everybody's, you can't argue on the issues. Everybody agrees with the issues. The problem is under the surface of what's getting done. That's how you pay attention to who really believes what they're saying. Because everybody's for affordable housing. How, how many politicians have you seen who have not said that they're for affordable housing in and out?
All of them.
Do we have, what do we have?
We don't have no affordable housing. So, so like I said earlier in my earlier videos, y'all better go check my videos out. I said, most of these politicians are damn lying. They are lying. Y'all can look them in their face. That's why most of them don't want their temperature test because you can look a person in their face and tell that you telling a lie. These politicians is out here talking about, I support affordable housing. Where in Ann Arbor, in certain areas in Ward one especially, do you see any affordable housing coming up? Any, uh. Opportunity to grow for the lowest of the lowest of.
And let me be fair, cause we got some government subsidized house and what does that mean? City of Ann Arbor don't necessarily have to put the money in. Okay, so when you start talking about, yeah, we got an affordable housing complex coming on. Because it's based on government subsidy. I'm talking about ownership. So we can do both and. So don't, don't, don't give me this nonsense about, we can't even focus on that. We're just trying to deal with the people who can't even have a home, the unhomed. They need to be dealt with, but you're talking about working class people who work here, who cannot afford to live here. For the government, they, they can't be eligible for the government subsidy. Still need affordable housing.
So those are the hurdles. Those are the hurdles, the same thing I've experienced. Out of all the lifetime of being in Ipsy Lanny, that's a shame. Uh, Ipsy Lanny native born at Byer Hospital. Should be able to buy a house in Ipsy Lanny. No opportunities is available. You know why? Because the employment ain't available like it should be. The right politicians ain't in office, the ones that say that they could do what they said they could do, we test their temperatures. We threw out some issues out there recently to a couple politicians, a couple people running for office. Just a breaking news for y'all. So, uh, we gonna see what's gonna happen because I am going to expose it. And I'm just being honest. I'm tired of politicians that think that they got you in their back pocket. Nobody ever had me in their back pocket. But what are we gaining? We're gaining access to what? The money is going to the wrong pots of people. This monies that is coming in the county. I have my own thoughts about it, but I need it to come out. I need it to come out. And it ain't gonna be too pleasant because I'm not gonna be too pleased with how it came out. Honest to God, Ann Arbor, I know I done talked about Ipsy a lot, but shoot, we live next to each other. Y'all damn problems gonna be, y'all go, y'all problems are gonna filter over through our area too. Go figure.
You know what I just learned, speaking of that? You know what I just learned? Speaking of what you're talking about per capita. Ann Arbor has a higher level of kids that qualify for the school lunches. Than Ipsy Lanny. So these are our hidden secrets.
Can, can I, can I mention a, a possibility that it might could be? I'm just, I'm, I'm just a.
No, the point that I'm making, when you try, when you're saying we're all in this, this is county money. Okay, so there is some relevance here when you talk about Ipsy Lanny. That's agreeing with you.
And, and, and honestly, if we being honest and factual. The low income population includes other minorities other than black people. The level of support for those folks have went up way, way up. So that's a rational situation here that we need to be having that conversation about. The money is distributed and could not be distributed properly. To benefit its poorest population.
Space don zip code. How could it be?
We gonna have that conversation. It's sad. So that's why, back on the page, we see, this is why I love interviews like this. They ain't scripted. They ain't scripted. We, we talk, we talk for two minutes before we came on the show and we signed in at, uh. Fifty-seven after the hour. I don't know her from Adams. She seems very bright, y'all. I mean, look, what do we have to weigh? A candidate versus another candidate. And I'm just saying, not because of the colors, but it's because of what they speak. What they tell you. Then that way you can test them. And see where they're coming from, see where that knowledge coming from. You know, we appreciate you. We appreciate you and your platform and you tell the public right now. How can they support your campaign? Because I do believe we need candidates in office that are transparent. That don't mind talking to the people. Or a person of color. Or a show of color in which let me correct the record. Because I'm, I'm an African American CEO and a host. This show is for the public. And it don't cost y'all nothing. So go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, no. This, this is, this is good. And, and I just wanna thank you because. I don't know what you're talking about by the July surprise, but, uh. When I got this and I, I'm just parving on this because this is what I'm running against without getting a platform.
Big government.
I thought running against, I, I need to know. I need to know that people are digging deeper to get to know me. I'm not suggesting that once you do, you're gonna vote with me, but give me a chance. So that's all I'm saying when I talk about this. Okay, so for me. And I don't know if I said this before, so if I did, forgive me. Three thousand dollars for one of these. Okay, I am literally on July sixteenth. Having a fundraiser where I'm selling chicken dinners here at Arrowood Community Center. And taking donations because this is the last month of the campaign and I've been meeting with people. I've been making myself available and I've been, you know, when people come at me with, say this and say that, I go, I'm not in the bubble. At least let me be new and introduce myself. Once you dirty me up, if I get in there, then I'm gonna just be dirty. I'm gonna do the best I can and everybody's not gonna agree with me. So for me, I need some support. I need the everyday person's support. So if you go to Angeline, at electangeline.com, again, that's electangeline.com. You're gonna see a donation button. If you care to donate, you will have that opportunity. But you also need to sign up for my website because you will be getting email blasts about these eight town halls. Four of them are on Zoom, four of them are in person in the first ward and at the Cary Town Sweet Waters. I'll be there. Come see me. Ask me questions. I'm not hiding anything. I have nothing to lose. You may not be happy with me if I make certain decisions, but I'm doing that based on what I know. And what I'm trying to do and what I hear from the people. So I need support. I need a chance. I get an article that says. The candidate rejects the idea that there are factions. But yet she has her yard sign in front of a house where Ann Bannister's is. Well, who, how the hell can I control who puts a yard sign out? And I'm, I got a yard sign next to the mayor's two doors down. Everybody's trying to put this narrative out there. I'm gonna make my own narrative. Even the people that support me, I say, hey, I'm not in the bubble. Let me hear what you gotta say and let me make my decision, do my research. And so that's what I want the opportunity for the voters to hear. And so again, the series of town hall meetings where you get that opportunity either by Zoom, it's to have weekends, there are evenings. There are Zooms, they're in person and also if you like what you hear and you are already ready to support, I need some volunteers. I got twenty more t-shirts. If you wanna put a t-shirt on, all I could afford was forty. Okay, come out to the, uh, the, the parade, march with me. Okay, sign up on the website. There's a place to sign up that says, I wanna volunteer, I wanna yard sign, I wanna donate, whatever you can do. I need help because the point is, I'm trying to have a fair race. I wanna be heard. You don't like what you hear, fine, but at least give me a chance is what I'm saying.
That's all you can ask for. And that's all I asked for when I ran and look, she's genuine with the conversation with me. Like I said, I don't know her from Adams. And I am trying to bring all the candidates on the show, whether we support you or not, that doesn't matter. We wanna give you a platform like we gave her. We gave you a lot of time to talk about things. I know it's not enough. We wanted to save. Some of that energy for those, uh, town halls that she's kicking off, y'all. Look here. Y'all please support this woman here. I'm asking y'all to support and the power of this investment of this show. I'm just saying because look. We have two candidates that was requested to come on the show at the same time. Fact remains the same. We have one replied, the other one didn't. And I'm not putting one black against the other. I'm just saying, I don't know neither candidate. Really, but I do care to make sure that the voters or the friends that are voters in their area. Know that their temperature has been tested thoroughly. She has a lot to give. Y'all gotta give her a chance, give her a chance. Contact her, talk to her a little bit more. Don't be afraid to ask questions. Don't be asking questions as your friends that might not like her. Ask questions, ask her the fair questions. And also when y'all get a chance to ask the other candidate. If she expects to be a public servant. Why won't she answer her emails or requests to be interviewed? Y'all, this is Tyrone Bridges. What I thought you knew, very thorough conversation with Ms. Angelene Smith. Ann Arbor City Council, Ward One candidate, look here. Check this video out. Rewind. Play it again from start. This is a genuine conversation. With a candidate that is worthy, in my opinion, to listen, to be listened to. And also for her vote, for your vote. Y'all gotta vote. Vote her. Listen, listen to her. Her temperature has been tested. Y'all might have questions that y'all wanna ask her. Go check her out. Don't sit there and do like what them other candidates did on me and say, oh. He is this and he is that. Go talk to him. And those who you can't talk to, you be the judge. You be the judge. Thank you for coming on once again.
My pleasure. Thank you so much for the time. I appreciate it.